To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here in this foul weather. It's good to see everyone here. Nice crowd. First item on the agenda is Kids Castle update. Joe Salvati, chairman of Kids Castle.
Hello, everyone. I'm Joe Salvati, chairman of the Friends of Kids Castle Committee, and I'm here today to thank some wonderful people who helped us organize a successful publicity event held recently at Kids Castle. You may remember during the last supervisor meeting, Supervisor Herring brought it up. And for those of you who are not aware, Fox 29 reached out to us with an interest in filming a Kids Castle for a giveaway contest they were doing that involved a secret word of the day. Lucky for us, the secret word was castle. But we had some challenges to overcome to make it all happen. They needed children there during the filming, and the event was going to be during school hours, so it wasn't going to be easy to get kids there. And we only had one day to organize it. Fortunately, we were able to reach out to our friends at the Learning Experience right here in Doylestown, who made a commitment to attend with a busload of their kindergarten children. And that's not all they did to help. They also emailed out and collected all the permission slips from the parents so the children could be filmed, which, of course, is not an easy thing to get accomplished. They also helped the children make cutouts of each one of the letters of Castle so that they can hold them up when the secret word was revealed. And they taught the children how to present the word castle in sign language, which is not easy to learn in a day. And these children were only four to five years of age, and they were absolutely wonderful, and they did a fantabulous job. So I'd like to thank the people from the Learning Experience in Doylestown, including Jennifer Eckfield, Sarah Euban, Kim Tompkins-Devlin, all the parents who were able to attend, and of course, the children. I'd also like to thank Princess Parties by Brittany, who brought along a character called Princess Elsa, who's the Disney character in the movie Frozen. And all the children were mesmerized by her, and she did a wonderful job interacting with all the kids, which really helped. Also, I'd like to thank Stephanie Mason, who worked fast to get the word out to everyone in the township through our email system and our website, and Supervisor Ryan Mannion, our Kids Castle liaison, for attending the event. Also Karen Sweeney was there, and Supervisor Herring. As a result of the publicity event, we received a lot of inquiries. Also, we received a donor who expressed a $10,000 interest in sponsoring the tot structure. And I'll show you a rendering of the playpiece that we're talking about here. So this is just a drawing. And there's a sliding board on the opposite side. And you might be able to see there's panels along here that children can also use. It's a playpiece for children ages two to five, but what's really unique about this piece is it's inclusive. Inclusive meaning that children of all abilities can use it, even those with special needs. So there's things along here for children that may have autism, also for seeing and hearing impaired. And they're all located close to the ground, so if children are in wheelchairs, they can get around and use them and play with them. Now, you may remember from our last update that we divided the $40,000 cost of the tot structure into four sponsorships. Prior to this publicity event, we already had one firm commitment for $10,000, which we still have. The new commitment, which leaves us with only two more sponsorship slots to fill. And the tot structure is the very last playpiece that we have left to install at Kids Castle. After that, all the playpieces will be installed. So whoever else wants to be part of the successful completion of this portion of our project by being a sponsor of this playpiece, you could email us directly at info@savekidscastle.org. That's info, I-N-F-O, at savekidscastle.org. Or call the township, and they'll get the message to us. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for all their help with this event, because together, all of us, we are building the kingdom at Kids Castle. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Any questions?
You did a great job. No questions.
All right. I know we're in a rush.
Well, no, you left nothing unanswered. PennDOT. Where did you guys have to come from?
Balaclava in Center City.
Oh, we're here.
That was a groan of sympathy.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time today. My name's Michael Mustalio. I work for a consulting firm called Urban Engineers. Joining me...
Yeah, I'm Dave Vdella. I also work with Mike at Urban.
Dave was our data and GIS specialist for this program that we helped start with PennDOT District Six. And so we're here on behalf of the district. They've asked us to come and follow up with you from your previous discussions regarding our southeastern road and New Britton Road suggested roundabout intersection project that was recently awarded construction funds through the Highway Safety Improvement Program that was competitive. One of the things that we worked with the district on is looking for feasible locations strictly where roundabouts would be a good fit for intersections. And so it was strictly focused on safety, because that's what the funding that they were trying to win was related to. And so with that in mind, we focused our projects strictly on safety. And then we, once we identified intersections that were in need of a safety improvement, we also then looked at secondary criteria. So just real quick, we started from a very high level. As Dave will explain, we had a data collection process, looked at it in a GIS database, looked at the primary screenings, which was safety-driven, and then we dove down into secondary criteria to really...the focus was to look for low-hanging fruit, for intersections that not only had a safety problem, but might have had lesser impacts from a right-of-way standpoint, utilities, environmental impacts. And so we looked at intersections that really were low-hanging fruit. From that, we did a safety analysis called an HSM, Highway Safety Manual, to help quantify some of the costs and benefits associated with it. And now we're in the phase where we're going to be starting up preliminary engineering and eventually get into project completion or construction.
Okay. As Mike said, this was a pretty data-driven exercise. It all happened last year. We started in, I think, around January of 2017, acquiring the data. And that started with getting PennDOT GIS data. They have publicly available data with their roadway management system files, their local roads files. Other data we were able to get from the local District Six office included things like traffic signals, if their intersections were already marked as a high-crash location list. But this was a pretty large study covering the whole five-county region. When we first looked at that roadway data, processing all of the intersections of where every road segment crossed another roadway segment in the five counties, there were 336,000 intersections that we're kind of looking at and trying to evaluate their crash history. We knew for this project, we wanted to select a candidate site on state roads. So that was one of the criteria we used to whittle it down to about that 29,000 intersections that were on state routes. Then there was still a lot of GIS processing work that we had to do to get to our final selection set of about 18,000. There were problems where you could visualize where maybe a road passes over another road. There'd be an intersection point marked there. We had to do a lot of scrubbing to make sure that we wouldn't classify that or process that as an intersection viable for a candidate for a roundabout. But going through all that process in the spring, we had about 18,000 intersections, about 3,600 here in Bucks County, that we processed for their crash history. The crash data is also available spatially from DV RPC. We processed using a five-year crash period from 2012 to 2016. And we decided after a meeting with PennDOT to say that any crash that was within 250 feet, a 250-foot buffer of the intersection point, should be considered a crash associated with that intersection. That distance was chosen. It's similar to something PennDOT already uses for their crash data analysis retrieval tool. So they thought that that was a consistent distance to process these intersections with. So to give a quick snapshot of kind of how the software identified these locations for us, using an intersection point like that green point in the center and buffering out 250 feet, we were able to kind of cut the roadway segments files and then identify which segments actually touched that intersection point in the middle. This may seem technical. The reason I'm trying to explain this is when you think about the 18,000 intersections that we do this for, you can't, you know, count the crashes at 18,000 intersections. You need to have an automated process. And this is how you kind of get to it. After having those buffers like that, the red routes were the ones that we would say, yes, a crash on that route is associated with that intersection. Then all those little red crash points on those red routes, we would say, yes, summarize those and count those as being part of that intersection point. All of those crash points have all of the kind of crash data that you may be familiar with associated with it. There's a big table behind all of them that show all the information about the crash you might be interested in, the types of crashes, and the severity of the crashes, which is the kind of information we used to move the study forward. The crash types, one of the things that PennDOT and we were interested in looking at right away was which intersections had high numbers of angle and head-on crashes. And that was because those are the types of crashes a roundabout can help ameliorate.
Yeah, correct. So one of the safety benefits of installing roundabouts is the reduced conflict points. And so this graphic really just demonstrates the reduction of a traditional signalized intersection, four-legged, with a four-legged roundabout. It reduces by a factor of four, because you're essentially eliminating the left-hand turns, which in turn are also related to increased severity. And so with that, this just demonstrates some of the conflict points, because with the roundabout, you're still turning left, but it's a series of right-handed turns.
The other data that is available with each one of those crash points is the type of crash, the severity of the crash. When we were doing this study, we were running calculations to determine, you know, the severity of each crash at each intersection. Initially, we're using the CABCO scale from the Highway Safety Manual, which lists fatal incapacitating, and you can see the values there for each type of crash. And then the HSM analysis, using the PennDOT tools, used Pennsylvania-specific societal crash costs to analyze these crashes, and those values are listed there as well.
This graphic really just demonstrates, when I said low-hanging fruit earlier, some of the things that we were looking at was total volume, ADT of the intersections. PennDOT wanted to start this program and focus on intersections that weren't super-high volumes, meaning we were looking at intersections that ranged from 25,000 vehicles per day all the way down to, you know, 10,000. And so this graphic is really a planning-level graphic that we use as a rule thumb, because if you start getting into additional volumes, then we start looking at multiple entrances and exit lanes. And so this is just a tool that we used upfront as part of the screening. We really focused on intersections that were below that 25,000 ADT. For these intersections that we're going to talk about, New Britton and Easton, we're around 10,000 vehicles per day.
So let's talk about this intersection, these two intersections in particular. Southeastern Road, where it intersects with New Britton Road, and then it's the northbound direction, it's Sowerman Road. When we sorted this by angle and head-on crashes, the New Britton Road intersection has 20 angle crashes over that five-year period. Initially, of the 3,600 intersections of Bucks County, this was ranked 43rd highest of all of the intersections. We had a number of meetings with PennDOT over the course of the spring, and we had to remove a lot of candidates from that list for various reasons. The kind of reasons Mike was talking about were typically used were when the volumes were too high, there were multi-lane roadways with volumes exceeding 25,000 or more, they were not appropriate candidates for single-lane roundabouts. That was a reason to remove a number of them. The other most typical reason we would remove something from the list was a physical constraint. If there's a house immediately adjacent to the intersection, and you can't fit at least a 110- or 130-foot roundabout in that location, PennDOT didn't want to move forward with those kind of right-of-way implications. We went through a number of meetings with District Six, the last of which on June 15th. This one was now ranked fifth out of 12 at that meeting. There were still a few ahead of that five at that meeting that they thought were not appropriate candidates, again, I think for volumes at that meeting. At the end of that meeting, we had a list down to five. This was the second highest out of those five. And then we asked Bucks County to review that list of five and provide their comments on these five intersections. Again, that was in June of 2017. The one above this on the list had property impacts, historic property impacts that the county planner felt were not appropriate for a roundabout. This was the second highest on the list, and at that time, he thought he had some reasons for the crashes, as you can see here listed in the quote, about the speeds coming down New Britton Road. And there didn't seem to be any issues with citing a roundabout at this location from a right-of-way perspective at that time. So we chose to move these intersections forward for our August H-SIP application, the Highway Safety Improvement Program funds that we were applying for. We submitted one roundabout in each of the five counties. And then in December of this year, we found out that all five of those that we submitted were selected to receive funding. And Mike can probably talk more about that.
Yeah, it was quite a surprise, I think, both to PennDOT and to all the county planning partners, that all five were selected. So I wouldn't say we got a warm and fuzzy feeling from Rich when we met with him. However, you know, we tried to take a data-driven approach and look at it quantitatively. Anyway, next slide, please.
So I think everyone here is familiar with these intersections. They're obviously very close to here. We just stopped by one more time on the way over. The southeastern and New Britton Road had 20 angle crashes during our five-year period that we analyzed. The ADT at each intersection was about 7,200. And there were an additional seven crashes at Sowerman Road. If you can see in the crash points, this is where they were located in the GIS. Heading in the southbound direction on Easton Road towards 611, you can see that the crash points were occurring right at the intersection and just north of the intersection. That's where they were located in the GIS. Not certain if that's exactly where they occurred. But in the northbound direction, you can see, again, it happened prior to the intersection, seven angle crashes at those locations.
These are just, this is a quick summary of the volumes on a daily basis. And so you can see, we're not talking about a ton of traffic compared to some of the other roundabout candidates that we had, but just wanted to show that we're talking about 5,500 vehicles per day going in one direction, northbound and southbound. And then the minor roads are less than 2,000 vehicles, which isn't a lot of traffic.
Yeah, if you can remember back to the graph Mike was talking about earlier, I think 20,000 and below is a very safe range, right, Mike, for any single-lane roundabout? So these are both well below that number. And again, this image, just to point out, southeastern road is bifurcated here with the northbound direction on the right and the southbound on the left, the environmental overview.
Yeah, so real quickly, one of the secondary criteria we looked at is anything that might be a red flag, you know, bugs and bunnies, historic properties, things of that nature, utilities, right-of-way acquisitions. The red lines here are the parcel map data that we were able to use. You can see right now, there's a pretty large area, you know, thinking of a roundabout as a node versus a link. It's more of a circular intersection versus a lineal cross. And so we had the Tabor Home, which came up as a hit on historic places. However, we're under the impression that that might be under some new development. The Triangle Park is a fourth resource. And then, of course, we're in Bucks County, so that's Bog Turtle County. So that usually comes up as a hit in terms of investigating for bog turtles. So some of the other issues that we noticed, obviously, the high-crash history, we went over in detail. We did notice from our field visits and just talking with some of the locals and talking with other folks that there is some higher speeds associated with the approaches, especially on Easton Road heading south. Poor visibility, especially when you're on New Britton Road as you're heading east, sitting here in your car, if you're in an SUV, you can barely see over the slope, and then you have these line of trees right here. So sight distance is a very important attribute in intersection safety. And so we noticed poor visibility. If you're driving on Easton Road, you might not, if you're a visitor, you might not even notice that you're crossing an intersection, especially in the southeastern road. And so also, we look at all modes as well. So we noticed that the bus route that comes up and down, tonight, we observed it stopping right in lane here. It had its hazards on, dropped a person off, and there's nowhere for him to cross safely. He crossed right through the median, cut through the Heritage Gateway, and then headed over to his home over here. So we feel like the roundabout could potentially add a lot of different elements to these situations that we noticed here in issues. So this is the proposed concept. It's probably at a 10% to 15% level of design. We feel like it obviously will increase safety. And I did prepare some slides in the best interest of time, though, to try to provide some roundabout education. We can table those. We definitely would have some sort of public meeting built into the design schedule. So it's up to the group here if you wanted to hear a little bit more about why roundabouts are safe. Obviously, we built in these designs to reduce the speed. You just physically can't drive through these intersections going fast. So that's one of the reasons why they're impactful on a safety standpoint, is because the slower the speeds, the less severe of the accident. And so people can judge gaps easierly, because there's more space and time between the vehicles that are traveling through the inner circle. And then, again, we're improving access. So there's this odd situation to provide access all the way down to the couple businesses and homes south of the Heritage Gateway Center, as well as providing access to the parking lot here. And then last but not least, we understand that the borough might be here. I'm not sure if I recognize anyone from the borough, but it could be an opportunity for a gateway into the borough. I think the biggest thing that's not bulleted here is that we noticed that there's a lot of trail network here. There's a lot of opportunities for bicycles and pedestrians. You have a daycare over by the date and then over here. And so it seems like there's a lot of potential for non-motorized pedestrian and bicyclists with the trail network. And so these are some of the benefits that the roundabouts will help. It'll help slow the vehicles down. It'll help people cross the intersection more safely and provide them more of a full network.
I think that's...
Is that pretty much it?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Bytag, can you make that PowerPoint available to us?
Yeah.
Just for reference.
I would like to talk with the PennDOT folks first, but I think that would be appropriate. I wasn't sure I could share it ahead of time, so I will get back to you.
Yeah, you just send it off to township, and then we'll have it, if you can.
Just one question. The entrance and exit from the daycare on Sowerman, looking at it, it's like there's no left-hand turn out of there. So do those people have to go around the circle to go?
Use the traffic light.
That's actually how the current condition is now. It's already a right-in and right-out at that location.
They use the traffic light to get out.
The map here is another signalized intersection. It's right where the Easton Road comes back together.
Yep. But all those issues, too, I think, Mike, when you move forward into design, I mean, those are the kinds of things that you'll spend more time with and talking with locals as well.
Yeah, one of the things this graphic doesn't represent is a safe place to pull over for the bus. I think that's another issue that we noticed, is that the bus stop has a nearside stop existing today. And so to try to integrate that and bring it around, there'd be plenty or ample space within the right-of-way to pull that bus off until a shoulder and have a more formalized bus stop.
You're talking about the SEPTA bus, not the DART bus?
Yes, the Route 55.
Yeah, okay.
And then also to have the bus be attached right to that multi-use path right there, and then be able to make all the crossing moves.
Okay.
No other questions?
I was curious about the study that was done. It ended in 2016. I believe there were some improvements made on southeastern road to help with visibility. And I believe, if I remember correctly, the trend was that we had much fewer accidents and much less serious accidents after that.
So we were able to watch the previous video, and from that conversation that we listened and heard, we followed up with the PennDOT folks. Actually, the 2017 data is going to become available to all within the next week or so. However, we were able to take a little snapshot in time and look. I believe those striping improvements were made about May of 15, according to PennDOT. And so just to clarify, Dave, if you go back to the existing graphic, right now, there used to be a left-turn lane here, a left-turn lane here, and I believe a left-turn...
Northbound, too.
Left-turn lane here. And so that was the improvements that I think you're referring to, is the elimination or a road diet of those left-turn lanes.
And there's those slow markings on the pavement leading up to the intersection.
Yeah, additionally, those crosses that you see on the pavement here, and it says "slow" as you approach here, those were also installed. And so we looked at two years prior and two years after, and the trend did not show any drastic improvements or worsening, I guess.
I think in the two-year period before, there were 10 crashes. And then subsequent to May 2015, we saw nine crashes.
And so just remember, it's a small snapshot in time. And so it's really hard to make big decisions like this based on just a year or two of data. These low-cost safety improvements do benefit on a very short-term basis, but this would be more of a long-term improvement to increase the safety and slow those speeds down without needing some sort of police radar gone or having someone out there to slow people down. You just physically wouldn't be able to drive through these types of intersections going faster than 25 miles an hour on average.
Okay. Any other questions up here?
Yes. I have several questions while they're putting lights on. I'd ask you the first one. How many fatalities did we have there?
There were zero fatalities during our study area, and I believe there were two severe crashes.
But your justification to pay for this cost-benefit considers the cost of a fatality, which was a million and some, and then it drops to 100,000 and 40,000 for minor ones. You put them all together, oh, fatality's going to obviously make that a skewed number. And I think if you take that fatality number out, this does, nowhere comes near paying for it.
What you're saying is true, but there was not a fatality in the data set that we used that was considered. Now, the value that we applied, the crash cost we applied, is a blended value of fadals and injuries.
That's my point.
But that's the value that is used in the methodology of the tool that we have.
It's used uniformly, I think.
I understand what you're saying, but by blending them, and I know that's what you had to use, but by blending them, that provided you to show a... had to use, but by blending them, that provided you to show a cost benefit.
Correct. It was one of the primary criteria.
If you had taken that out, you wouldn't have come close.
Taking what out?
Taking the fatalities out, the cost of the fatality.
Well, the cost of the fatality isn't incorporated into the formula. The cost is only added in as if there was a fatality. So, it's like a checks and balances. If there is a fatality, then that cost gets associated with the...
No, I think Dave answered it better. It's in there.
What we were, what we applied to the injury crashes only, and we don't apply that to the property damage-only crashes, but to the injury crashes, is a blended rate of about 200 and some thousand, and the Pennsylvania societal crash cost that was in the slide.
Yeah.
So, that times all of the injury crashes is what leads to those values in determining the benefit cost them out.
And the two main reasons, or things that we're trying to solve, was the sight distance and the speed. So, if I improve the sight distance by cutting out that hill, for lack of a better description, and I lowered the speed limit, and I can do that for 150,000, I'll really save money instead of spending $2 million for the project. Is that a fair...
Yeah, I would say that's fair. I think the one thing that PennDOT reiterated is that our study was strictly focused on roundabout opportunities. However, if the township in the borough, or whoever, the county, wanted to pursue looking at different safety opportunities, PennDOT would expect you to submit an application and also identify your funding source.
And that's my problem. It looked like you had a solution, you were looking for a problem where you could put it to solve.
That's true. Now, our study was designed to identify roundabout locations as they were federal highways, proven safety countermeasures. The district wants to implement roundabouts in District 6 in high-crash locations. That's what we were set to find, and find locations for them.
And I don't want to go on and on, because I got a lot of other ones. I guess my real question is, what do you, what are, if we decide we don't want to go with this, do we have that choice?
That's a question I'm unable to answer. I think that it's in your best interest to utilize the funding that's been allocated for this intersection, but I can't answer that.
So, it's going to happen no matter what, basically, is what you're saying, which bothers me a little...
He said he can't answer the question.
Well, but he answered it.
He said he can't answer the question.
All right, but I'm pursuing it. Well, I'm pursuing it.
So, we don't know. The answer is, he doesn't know.
And, and it, you know, you can put in the cost numbers, but there were a lot of other things I had issues with in the report. But you also are minimizing that for two years possibly, that's going to be closed off there. If I understood, if I understood...
That's a true statement. I think that we would try to build the project under live conditions.
Well, you gave us the choice in there. You said there were an option, either shut down or do it, I'll say piecemeal, or a bit at a time. But that's a major intersection, even though you say there's only, I forget, 10,000 or...
1,500.
Yeah, that's the gateway, and that's a busy section. But I won't keep expending my breath, I'll turn it over to, back to the chair, or whatever, but I, let me, a couple more comments. One, I understand roundabouts, I've been through many of them. Mr. Sinclair and I have had this discussion, I think they're great, one-lane ones, I think are great, I'm not into the two lanes. I like the one lanes, I've been on many, 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 many of them. They do work, so I'm not coming from that, you know, New Jersey perspective, if you will. But if I don't have a voice, I, you know, I might as well, you know, and I wish the Bucks County Planning Commission, and you probably can't answer this either, but I, you know, before all this money was spent for all this development, it would have been nice to get the opinion of the township, because, I mean, that's what we get elected for, is to make decisions for our township.
Right.
I know it's your road or the state's road, I understand all that, but, you know, I...
I'm quite certain that our client at PennDOT wants this kind of interaction with the locals. The amount of time that we had in going through the county was what we had in order to get our applications in. I'm certain that they want this kind of...
Yeah, I believe it's an open dialogue. I don't think anything's set in stone. I do think that it was a surprise that the intersection was chosen as part of the Highway Safety Improvement Program that was competitive throughout the whole state, and so, or the Commonwealth. And so, this intersection did rise to the top in terms of crashes. It's not like this was just picked because we felt like, hey, this wouldn't have many right-of-way impacts. Compared to the volumes and the crashes that we assessed, you know, it came up pretty high compared to all the other intersections in Bucks County.
In that timeframe you looked at, that's correct.
That's correct, which is typical of the industry, to look at a five-year crash history.
Right.
As I said, I've got a lot of issues with it. I'm not for it. I think it's the wrong place, I think it's a waste of taxpayer money to put all that money into this intersection when there are better ways to solve it and more economical ways to solve it. But as you said, I've got no choice, so...
That's not what he said.
He didn't say that, right.
Okay. I make a motion, we don't go through with this. How's that?
Motion fails for one of a second.
Well, you can give it a chance.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Barb, can I just make a comment?
Absolutely, Chief.
I think I've been on the Traffic Advisory Committee since its inception, and I was part of this whole process of the modifications that we currently have out here. And we were very thankful to PennDOT when they, when they were made. However, it was the request of the Traffic Advisory Committee that signalization would be done. And we were, at that time, dissatisfied with the improvements that they made, because we wanted the bigger picture. And we understand in the end that they wanted to utilize this to gain a better understanding of what was actually taking place out there. It is true that these, the improvements that they made have decreased the level of accidents, the majority of the accidents. But I think in moving forward, that you have to look at this as, and they touched on it, I don't know if you picked up on it, with the amount of development that's going on here, this satisfies today's traffic flow. What is going to happen as we move down the road 10 years from now? Will this satisfy that traffic flow? If PennDOT is willing to put this type of money into our intersections, I think it deserves a serious look, rather than to just say no. I mean, they're willing to do it. From my understanding, it's not costing the township any money.
That's what my understanding is as well. And I think that you bring up a valid point, noting that the intersections are about 7,500 vehicles per day, and that an average single-lane roundabout would work up to about 25,000 vehicles per day, depending on the left-turn movements, et cetera. You're going to have a lot of room for capacity improvements. You're going to keep moving, traffic moving, you're going to keep them moving at slower speeds, and you're going to also have better accessibility than what's out there today, not only for the vehicles, for the trucks, the fire department, the bicyclists, and the pedestrians. And so, I'm not here to sell you on it, I'm just trying to give you all the facts.
I personally think it's an opportunity to build for the future, which could be 20 years out, which we don't normally have an opportunity to do.
And I'll let the residents talk, but just, Chief, I wasn't just saying no. I mean, I've done a lot of work in looking at this, and I've got some valid points, a couple of them which we've already agreed to. So, I didn't just say no. And it is our money. There's no donor or no philanthropic person, I don't think, going to put up this money, right? This is coming out of my pocket.
All of our money, yeah.
It's tax money, exactly.
I don't know.
Well, it's still tax money. I'm done.
But it's PennDOT money that's going to roll to another intersection if we don't...
Maybe they need it better.
I mean, you have to, well, but they don't, because they just did an analysis and determined that we were...
We can debate, we can continue to debate this. For now, these guys probably have to drive somewhere.
Correct, sorry.
But does anyone out there have a question, just burning question, you have to take the podium and identify yourself, or the microphone, and identify yourself, please.
Yes, sir.
Ah.
Can you hear me, or you want me to talk into this?
Talking, talking.
You can talk into the microphone. Who are you, and where do you live?
My name's Matt Conway, I live on 578 New Britton, the first house right there on the left. So, right there, yep. So, you know, I'm glad to see something happening with this intersection, right? We've there a while, there has been many accidents and things like that. My question is more like, where are we at in this process, right? This is the first time I've heard about it, like, so, we'd get a better look at the plans and things like that as we go forward.
Good question.
So, that's, you know, like, this process of seeing that and...
Yeah, it's a great question. The funds that were awarded were awarded in December, and so, they were made public in January. So, we're at the very infancy stages. However, the funding that was awarded is linked to a certain timeframe for construction, and so, there's a very, there's about a year, a year and a half of design schedule built into that before we would go to construction. And within that timeframe, there's the environmental clearance process, and then there's also the public involvement process, and there's also the preliminary engineering and final design. So, with that, there would be plenty of opportunity to have a public meeting, to provide more roundabout education, to answer questions, to work with the stakeholders and the planning partners on how to make the best fit.
And then what'll happen through this, through here?
Great. And that was, I may question, I'm happy to see something like a roundabout personally, because I don't want a light, right? We have enough lights, and I'd probably never be able to get out of my driveway at certain times of day, and then what we're doing right now isn't working. But, just as we have plenty of time, though, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anybody else? Take the microphone, please.
My name's Bernadette Willig, I live at 566 New Britton, which is the second house One of my big concerns, since I've been in this house, is just getting out of my driveway, I take my life in my hands every day. Because of the crest that comes up New Britton Road, people can't see my driveway, and they're going so fast, I'm concerned, I guess, what I want to say is, are they going to do anything about the speed limit on that road with going into this roundabout?
So, typically, the average running speeds as you approach the roundabout decrease. Here, I can show you this real quick. Is that it? This is a graphic that I usually show during my roundabout 101 educational videos, and what this does is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it, it just demonstrates the speed profile as you, if you were a car here driving towards the roundabout. So, let's just say your house is about right here, okay? Those speeds would start to decrease depending on the average running speed on the road. And so, this just graphs the running speed as you were to drive straight through the intersection. And if we provide enough deflection or inability to drive straight through the intersection, you just physically wouldn't be able to drive at a fast speed. You would hit the curb, you would veer off the road, and you would, you'd learn real quickly that you need to take that, that approach at a slower speed. However, we are tying in probably prior to your roadway, and so, I think, I think you would see a decrease in running speeds on your road, contrary to a signal where someone might speed to make the yellow, or make, and just green, or the green ball.
Well, that actually decreased her speed, she's a side street coming to a stop sign, you got to slow down either way.
Yeah, we didn't necessarily observe the speeds that you're talking about on the roadway, but you live here, I would trust your judgment and honestly...
I've been cursed at, screamed at, had the horn blown at me, because I go to pull out, I look, I look, I look, I go to pull out, and here comes somebody, and they're usually going too fast.
Right.
I mean, that road is 35 miles an hour, some people are going up to 50, coming up that hill. And they don't realize that it crests up, so they can't see the people coming out of the driveways.
Well, then you got to stay tuned to these discussions, because that's a valid point, and maybe it's all going to get incorporated into this plan.
I was just going to ask that. Typically, how far back from the intersection do you incorporate changes like in her case on New Britton? Could we take the hill out so she minimizes, to minimize that issue?
So, currently, our concept doesn't necessarily correct any vertical grades or crests of hill. We would try to tie in as quickly as possible, one, because of the construction funding set at a certain limit. And so, as we would extend that out, it could decrease the price and the money associated with the construction. But I do think one of the benefits of a roundabout is you'd need less intersection sight distance to, because it is yield control, and it's more of a circular intersection than a straight lineal intersection. And so, you know, just based on prior experience, I would say that you would deserve, to answer Chief Logan's question, I would say you probably experienced those slower speeds.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else, real, burning questions, got to be a burning question, go ahead.
There's two of them.
Two of them. Thank you.
Hi, Peter DeBrow.
Where do you live, Mr. DeBrow?
Business owner, Ray Long, coming up, coming up 611, that exit there. You know, when I, when I just applied for my driveway permit, PennDOT, you know, one of the things I said to them, I said, "Look, this road here is, you know, 45 miles per hour, coming up, you know, the road here, to where it's going to turn 25." I said, you know, "What do I need to do to tell somebody that needs to be a slower speed?" And basically, it was like, an act of God needed to happen to change a speed limit, you know? So, I guess, as part of this, is there going to be a change of speed limit on that 45 mile per hour on the Southeastern Road?
To clarify, you're down here?
Yeah, right, I'm like, right where your hand is. Like, right, yeah.
Okay.
On the other side. On the other side.
Normally, we put recommended speed advisory signs on the approaches. To change the speed, from what I understand, from a PennDOT perspective, you have to do a speed study, and it takes a little bit of documentation to try to convince PennDOT to change the speeds. With the roundabouts, they're self-mitigating in terms of the speed control, and so, you would observe much slower speeds at the intersection node, and then as you gradually get away from the intersection, you would get back to the existing condition.
So, you're saying that it's still going to be 45 miles per hour, and they're going to come up on this, you know, all of a sudden, there's going to be this, you know, roundabout that they have to, whoa, where's this coming from? And they're going to swirl around it.
That's correct. It's one of the, one of the reasons why roundabouts are implemented, is to help speed control and slow people down. And so, there's advanced warning signs, advanced guide signs, there's pavement markings, and sometimes we put in reverse curvatures to give visual cues to the driver as they're approaching this type of intersection.
Mike, what is the speed, the average speed through a single lane? Like, through the circulatory part of the roadway?
It depends on the size of the circle, but in anywhere, I would say from 18 to 22 miles an hour, the running speed, you physically could, if you had a Corvette, probably could drive it a little bit faster than you would a SUV.
One more question?
I'm Mark Shagni, I represent the Heritage Gateway Center ownership, and so, I'm very interested in what this study shows and the possible future plans. It seemed to be reference made during the presentation that there may have been a report or a summary that's been provided, perhaps at the township, I don't know if that can be made available to us. I think I heard mentioned that one option, if this goes forward, is that you might shut down Northern Southeastern Road while it's under construction. That would be devastating for us and for our tenants, so we would adamantly oppose shutting down the roads. But otherwise, we'd like to be kept abreast, obtain whatever information is, can be made available, and also be part of the process here.
It was on our agenda a couple meetings ago, we can probably dig one out for you.
Okay.
What we were provided.
All right.
I don't have one on me right now.
And can you provide notice to the, to the surrounding property owners for future meetings?
You got notice for tonight, right?
I did, yes.
Yeah, so you'll continue to get that notice?
Great. All right, thank you.
You're so welcome. Okay. I think you'll be back, so, right? Or some, not tonight, but you will be back at some point.
We hope to, right?
We hope to. I mean, I think, I guess my closing statement would be is if you guys, as a group or a whole...
Close into the microphone.
He has one on him.
Oh, thank you.
I would, I would suggest if you have more follow-up questions or concerns, whatever it may be, to reach out to PennDOT and to, you know, give your endorsement or condone the project, because I think the time is now to try to make a decision and to move forward, because I believe the funding will go elsewhere if it's not utilized here.
So, we would like, we would like to have a timeline from you guys to let us know what we need to do and when, by when.
Yeah, I would say it's not necessarily me to give you that timeline, that would be the PennDOT folks, and we certainly can relay that information back to the traffic unit.
We would appreciate that.
Yeah, great.[1746.33] And I appreciate you guys listening to our, our, our presentation.
Well, you tell PennDOT that we appreciate you being here.
No problem.
Drive safe.
Yeah, safe drive home.
All right, thank you. Good luck.
I was trying to shut it back down for you, but, thank you.
Okay, so the future is that the board, I think, does not want to lose this opportunity, but we want to give it a good airing as well.
Right.
All right, so.
So how do, who, how will we contact PennDOT and when, who will do that? Stephanie or some?
Yeah, well, Stephanie will contact PennDOT. PennDOT will be in touch with us-
Okay.
And we'll learn what the timeline is.
Yeah, good.
Sir, if you have a question, you have to go to the microphone, please. I'm sorry. Because we are being televised live, web-streamed, the whole bit.
My name is Paul and 1636 Stork Road.
Excuse me.
I'm, I'm very new to this township, but let me add something about this project. I used to have business in the Fisterville where projects like that took place, and all businesses around that area went bankruptcy. Everybody was closed. That's the first. Second, it's all about data, how it's represented to us, to people. Based on their data, it's supposed to be significant improvement on crashes and all that, but what kind of improvement they're talking about? Is that 50%, 80%? Because somebody represented different project way before, as I heard, about improvement of roads, but based on that data, there was no improvement at all. Amount of crashes stayed the same. So if people would like to proceed with their project, people needs to know and kind of make sure that the result is gonna be positive.
All good points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we have another presentation, or our final presentation, I think, from stormwater management, or from stormwater people, Mr. Burns and Mr. Mahalik.
Press any.
Press any. There you go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rich Burns and this is Russ Mahalik. We're from GHD. We're environmental consultants. We have a presentation for you describing the illicit discharge detection and elimination program. This is a program we, here's the agenda for tonight. This is part of the EPA mandated program for stormwater sampling that is run through the state program. So the agenda for tonight is talk about the current status, what we did this past year, the sampling and the results, go over some unique DNA sampling we did to further identify sources, and what we're gonna do going forward, in 18, there's a new permit coming our way as well. Go over takeaways and a short question and answer session. This shouldn't be more than really 10 minutes tops. So this is year 15 of the program, so it's a pretty robust program. It's not gonna go anywhere. It might even evolve a little more complicated with some additional sample parameters. That's for another time. What we do is we go around all the structural outfalls you see in the township along the roadways. And what we do is what we call hotspot sampling. And we go to these locations 72 hours when it's been dry, so no rain, and we look for any flow. And what we're trying to find is illicit discharges. So if it hasn't rained in 72 hours, you wouldn't expect flow. And if we do see it, it could be indication of a failed septic system, or somebody polluting, or something like that. So the current status is the township's in compliance. The Pennsylvania DEP really loves this program. We give them a call every year and they love what's going on. There is a new application in, notice of intent to apply for a new permit, which will go for an extended, extended period of time. They're working on that now, and we should get the permit in a couple of months or so. March this month, actually, is when we submit our report from all the sampling we did last year. That's summarized here. So basically, that's photographs of what we go around. It hasn't rained for 72 hours, it's dry at this one, but there's flow there. So we sample where we see the flow. And this is a map of the township, divided up into three sectors. We kind of follow the division for the septic sampling cycle and the cleanout cycle. And we just divide this township up, freeze of reporting. So we had focused inspections. There's hundreds of outfalls throughout the township. And what we've done is we focused, going back year to year, to the ones where we've know we've had results indicating positive hits, and we go back to those every year. So what we do is we sample for fecal coliform, and that's an indicator parameter for possible pathogens in, in water. And basically, if they get to streams, they can get into public water intakes and affect high-quality streams. So we sample fecal coliform at all the ones with flow. And you can see the last year, we collected nine in Area 1, nine in Area 2, and Area 3, three samples. And that's pretty consistent year to year. And what we've done for the third year in a row is we've collected hotspots. We've done another sample for DNA. And it's, what we've done last five years, or last two years, we've collected five samples as well. We inspect more, but we can only sample ones that have flow, of course. And we submit these to a lab for DNA fingerprinting. And we'll go over that in the next slide or so. But this is basically sources of fecal coliform. It can be from sewers, sewer systems, wastewater treatment plants, animals, livestock, and you can see all the sources there. So we submit that to a, to a lab, and basically, they can divide it into those parameters. They can tell us whether it's human or something else. So basically, we're primarily looking to see if it's human, indicative of septic system failures. But we can detect those other things as well. So in Area 1, we did 12 inspections. We collected nine samples for just fecal coliform. Two were collected for DNA. Five samples had fecal coliform over 200 colonies per 100 milliliters, which is kind of a baseline. It's not a drinking water standard by any measure, but it is kind of a standard for streams and such. And our maximum result was over 600, and that's how the lab reports it. They can't, they do it like on a plate. And that's, that's pretty, that's pretty high. So both samples that we did for DNA testing were positive for human. One was also positive for the animals as well. So we, we give this information to the township. Area 2, did 10 inspections, nine samples for fecal coliform, three for DNA. We had seven samples over 200. The maximum was 600. The one MBAS is actually a sampling for detergents, which is another potential illicit discharge. It could be somebody has an illegal hookup from their, their washer. They're washing down stuff and they have a pipe that's going down into the storm systems. So we sample for that, so that's a positive hit for some detergents. The DNA testing in Area 2 showed all three were positive for human, two for dog and two for ruminant. In Area 3, where we have less, less of an issue, we typically collect about this many samples for fecal coliform, none for DNA this time. Two were less than the detection limit, really. And the maximum was kind of high, though, at 2,200. And we had another detergents sample positive. So just to summarize, a running total for the last couple of years, you can see the areas where we've had greater than our baseline, and we show the maximums. So that's just comparing all of them. Our slide presentation will be uploaded to the website, and several years past are up there as well. We've slimmed it down over the years, so if you really want some background history of it, you should probably look at one that's, you know, five years old. Going forward, will GPS all outfalls if they're building new neighborhoods? We'll update the maps for the permit. We'll complete inspections again on our hotspots, about 25 locations overall. Any additional inspections the township asks us for, we want to make sure we comply with the permit. And we'll do additional source investigations like we've done in the past, and they're available on previous presentations as well. That's just a picture of, the streams are overlaid. Some of the streams are deemed impaired, which is why we're doing this, this study. That's available on the DEP website. And basically, we're in compliance. We're gonna keep doing the inspections. They're required by the permit. We'll update things. It's important to keep doing your septic system maintenance and public participation, cleaning, cleaning your septic systems. It's, the goal is to improve the water quality in our public waterways. And it's-
Thank you for your understanding and comprehensive presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
When you talk about less than 200, where the 200 is the standard, and if we have that are higher than that, and there's a number of them that were higher than that, how does that mean that you're in compliance? Are you allowed so many of greater than standard?
Okay, the 200 is what sewage treatment plants are allowed to discharge to a stream.
Okay.
You are in, still in compliance because even though these are over the 200, you're going out there, you're locating these, and you're trying to identify the sources. Now, it's my understanding that just recently, you guys have started work on putting sewer systems in one of the general areas where these numbers have always been coming up higher than 200. So you're in compliance with your permit in the fact that even though you have exceedances on some of the sampling results, you're actively trying to locate the sources and eliminate them. So that, that basically keeps you in compliance. If you weren't doing anything about it, that would be, that would be trouble.
We're compliant with the program.
Yes, you're being compliant with the program.
There'll be failures out there.
Right. We have, exactly.
And it looks like it's just a monitor program, but where we have seen instances, we've gone and done di-tracing to determine a particular location and found one in particular and had that remedied.
And then if you look at some of these where you have multiple years' data on, on your spreadsheet, you see it increasing and then it decreases a lot. Do you think that has anything to do with the cycles of having your system pumped, or is there some other thing that's going to impact?
No, I do, I think it has something to do with the, having the system pumped. And I also think in the earlier years, it's also seasonally dependent. If you do the sampling during a very wet season, like now in the springtime or whatever, you're gonna get a lot of dilution there from groundwater that's also getting into the system, and that could actually lower your numbers. So for the last several years, we've tried to do this during the summer months when we are in a dry period. And we can say it is not groundwater that's leaking into the storm sores, but it's actually an illicit discharge.
And my, my last question is, is really one for Rick, because that's the liaison for Water and Sewer Committee. How does that committee use this information?
They take this data and put it onto the map of the area that we have. In fact, Stephanie's Winter and, I forgot her name.
Val.
Val.
From Michigan.
To take all the information, this being part of it, and put it on a map, and then it, and I'll, I can show you the map. It, it highlights those areas so that we can graphically look at where we've got problems. So, yeah, we do look, we, we already got this year's information. We do look forward to getting it. I, I just, you know, in an effort to always be improving, I think, is where Ken's coming from also. I noticed the dog DNA keeps showing up. Any, any thoughts or concerns, is that on your own property and they just don't pick it up, or is it-
Again, depending where the source is coming from, yeah, it could just be leaking in from somebody, you know, a dog going on the property and it's somehow running off and getting into the sewer. Or it could actually be, several years ago, there was out here, I believe it was off of New Britton Road, right in that area, people were walking their dogs, they were picking up the, the droppings in bags, but then they were just throwing them over the embankment. They weren't taking them home and putting them in the garbage because I don't remember which one of the, the young ladies was working here at the time, but she physically took me out there and showed me these piles of bags that were filled with dog droppings.
Wow.
Great neighbors, right?
And then the last thing I just want to point out to everybody is, in the beginning, this DNA thing is something that just came about in about the last three years. Prior to that, we could sample for fecal coliform, but we couldn't tell, was it from dogs, was it from geese, was it from deer in the area, or was it human? It's only been the last three years that they've come up with this, this way now that they can actually break down and tell you what it is. So that's, again, why we have it broken down up there, to show that, yes, we are seeing fecal coliform that is human there. Again, if it was in an area that was sewed, I would say it probably was a break in a sewer system. If it's in an area that doesn't have sores, the only other way it could be getting there is from septic system somehow leaking into it.
Yeah. But even if we have a known site that we are suspect, we think it's a reoccurring problem. There's constraints or limitations of what we can-
We have to notify the Board of Health, really, who has primary jurisdiction.
Yes, the Board of Health, because when I di-traced the one year, we had to send letters out to the residents, and when I di-traced that year, the ones that let us in-
That was, that's where I was going with that.
I flushed the toilet. It showed up, it showed up in the outfall, and they notified the Board of Health, and the Board of Health took it from there. Then they're the ones that have the jurisdiction to make them fix the problem or shut them down.
But a resident can say no. You're not gonna di-
Correct. The residents can say no, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll let you get on with your meeting then.
Again, nice, comprehensive, succinct presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we, but you need to do what you have to do, and you did it. So, thank you. Not gonna rush the process.
No, we will be in touch.
Thank you. Visitors are public comment. Seeing and hearing none, I'm gonna give you some announcements. I'm gonna do this only once tonight, so. The next Board of Supervisors meeting is Tuesday, April 7th at 5:00 p.m. We're gonna be closed on Friday, March 30th for Good Friday. Township Board of Supervisors and the Ways and Means Committee is going to have its budget work session meeting on Tuesday, April 17th at 3:00 p.m. And you are all welcome to attend. Washington DC Cherry Blossom trip is April 7th, 2018, $55 a person. You can sign up by going to the website, doylstownrec.com. Red Cross Spring Blood Drive is Monday, April 16th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The Red Cross would like you to sign up in advance by going to redcrossblood.org. The annual Township Golf Outing, big, big thing that we do every year for Township Parks and Park Systems, is Monday, June 4th, all public is, is welcome to attend, and they're always looking for sponsors. Monday, June 4th, 2018, get your foursome together. It's at the Doylestown Country Club. And you can go to doylstownrec.com to sign up for that, or just call me, as I tend to be the golf chairman now, 20 years going, running. Upcoming Bicentennial Celebrations, the dedication of the Native Plant Demonstration Garden Party is 3 to 5 on May 6th, it's a Saturday. It's gonna be a lovely day, come rain or shine. We're gonna have it. Anyone wear hats? And it'll be information, there'll be demonstrations, and there'll be food, bits of food to eat, and we got people from the EAC here if you have any additional questions about that. It's gonna be a lovely event. The other thing that's coming up is we're putting a float in the Memorial Day Parade in Doylestown Borough. It's the bicentennial float. I think all the supervisors will get an invitation to participate in that. It is on May 28th, 2018, and the Bicentennial Committee and volunteers are putting that float together with the help of our Public Works Department. Thank you very much. Bicentennial memorabilia, did you, if you don't know it already, we're celebrating our bicentennial this year, 2018. We're 200 years old, that's why you're gonna keep hearing about it. We, we're selling Mercer tiles, which are absolutely beautiful things, T-shirts and bricks, and legacy oak trees. You can buy a tree and it'll be planted, oak tree, be planted in the, one of our parks for, forever. And we're only selling 200 of them. 200 years old, 200 trees. Create a flag for Doylestown Township Contest is a $1,000 prize. It's ongoing. I'm gonna be doing a video this week, so we're gonna be pushing that to get a lot of people gearing up for that. Guidelines and requirements can be found on our township website for the flag competition. All ages and all abilities, some connection to Doylestown Township. No letters and no numbers. Be creative. Movie and ski tickets are available. Please contact the admin offices for prices and availability. Got potholes, state roads, call 1-800-FIX-RIDE for Township Roads. You can call us at the Township Building, or you can go on our website, because we have a list of roads on our website. Leaf and yard recycling, third Saturday of each month, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Drop-off is the New Britton Road entrance to Central Park. And visit our website for more information. By the way, our website has so much information, so if there's anything you need to know about Doylestown Township, go on our website or tune to DTV. It's all free. Okay, next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the March 16, March 6th, 2018 meeting. I understand that there's at least one correction from my left. Chief?
Yes, page 5, paragraph 2, line 8, it states, "Chief Logan notified that the emergency response team will be ready."
Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve with that correction.
Move to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Correspondences, anything?
No, nothing to make this.
Felicity?
You have my letter. I was asked at the last meeting by the board to expand the Ways and Means Committee from 5 to 7, so obviously I went back and got a copy of the original resolution, and lo and behold, it already has seven members. It just so happened, the only caveat was, it said no more than two supervisors could be members of the committee. So, they didn't say that two members of supervisors had to be members, it just said you couldn't have more than two. So, it didn't make a lot of sense for you to go any further without some direction from the board.
Well, technically, no supervisor should be a member of any committee. We should only serve liaisons to the committee, so that's a misnomer right there, I think, with the.
No, no, I mean, I'm not, I mean, they could, it's just a matter of, you could appoint somebody from the board, you don't have to, or you don't, you're not prohibited, it just seems to me, you just.
Our policy is not.
Your policy is not.
Yeah, I mean, it says, "No more than two members on the Ways and Means shall be members of the Board of Supervisors."
Yeah, so I think it's fine the way it is, we just appoint whoever we want.
We just don't do it.
You just don't do it?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So, we're good. So, should we, is there a motion just to pass on this?
You don't do anything at this point.
It's in place, we don't have to do anything, yeah.
Direction to advertise then?
Direction to advertise.
What? For members.
For members, new members, additional members.
That's good, we'll do that. Any else?
That's it.
Please, chief?
Nothing to report.
Township engineer?
Nothing.
Director of Operations?
No.
Not?
Not at this time.
Don't, keep asking.
Oh.
He'll come up.
Training requests.
Yes.
We have the memo. What do you guys think? Everyone had a chance to read it?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve Dave Tomco and the Fire Marshal to attend? Make a motion for both.
Oh, yeah, second.
Okay, any comment, question?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Yes. Okay, Pebble Ridge Sewer Project, Woodbridge Sewer Project.
No, that's just to let you know that the Gilmore and Associates did open bids for the Clearing and Grumming and the Pump Station on 3/15. Gilmore's in the process of evaluating the bids, and we'll have a recommendation for your next meeting, it's just informational. I have two other things, real quick. On your table, and one was sent to you yesterday, the first that I put on your table this evening is just informational, that you may recall that New Britton Township has a $1.6 million grant, TAP grant, to install bike trail from basically along Bristol Road coming to Upper State, and then from Upper State, the extension connecting into our trail at Shell Brit. They'll be holding an informational meeting with their residents, and they will include our residents from Cedar Crest Farms as well to go over the work schedule and everything. It's going to be April 16th. There will be some possible detours, or if they can afford it, they'll do a, when they go over the Upper State Road Bridge, they'll either have to detour when they do that, to put the pedestrian crossing there, or they will try to do a signal where one side goes and the other, so.
So, the meeting is April 16th?
Mm-hmm. Where? In New Britton Township.
And what time?
I don't have a time on that, but we will send letters out. Just wanted to.
To the Cedar Crest resident?
Yes. Cedar Crest Farms resident. The other one is that you were sent this yesterday from Karen. It is the schedule for the Performing Arts, Thompson Performing Arts Series for 2018. Fundraising has been underway, and I think we're pretty, she's pretty well set with all the fundraising at this point in time, and this is the schedule. We'll be executing contracts as they come forth, if anyone has any questions or.
Doesn't she want approval on the schedule?
Yeah, if you're okay with the schedule and the.
We'll entertain a motion to approve the Performing Arts Series schedule, beginning with May 18th, 2018, and at this point, going into October, October 19th, 2018. This also includes the big celebration for the Bicentennial, fireworks, band and all that jazz. It's a lot of, it's a big, it's a big number, but the number is large this year because of the extra stuff we're doing for the Bicentennial and the celebration. The Bicentennial Committee has actually raised a lot of that money. So, is there a motion to approve the schedule? Is that a yes, or you want a question?
I have a question and a statement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we have a motion to approve first and then a second?
That's why I was waiting, that's why I was waiting.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'm the one always talking, so I'm just going to listen for everybody else to make comments.
We need a second to make.
I'll second.
There we go.
Now, discussion, please.
When this comes forward, what I would like to see in addition to this is, and I know Karen has started doing this, is what the, all the expenses are to do these number programs. And it's not that I'm saying we shouldn't do them, even if we don't, even if we spend more money than what we raise.
Okay.
But we should at least know the answer.
Okay.
So, I would like to do that.
I think she's been doing that, yeah.
I would just like to see that. And I think that's what, as supervisors, we should have in front of us in order to make a decision on these programs. Point two was, while there's a number of the programs greatly attended, and some are less attended, and I would be curious, and maybe Stephanie, you do know, what are we doing differently for this year than what we've done last year in order to increase attendance? So, I think doing the programs as often as we can is great, but how do we grow participation at these shows?
Well, I think through Parks and Recreation, through social media, you know, through press releases, through our newsletter, through the e-blasts, through both the Park Rec website and ours, we're doing everything that we can to encourage people to attend the events. You know, different times, different weather affects, you know, I've seen that 100 times, you know, if it's pushing 100 degrees sometimes, it will affect attendance.
Yeah.
If we have fireworks, there's more people there than you can imagine. You know, different types of groups bring out different people, and, but we have a big, you know, there's definitely groups from, we've reached out to the various senior housing groups and nursing homes and things like that.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about. What are we doing differently? Are we doing anything differently?
Yeah, we've reached out to all those. We're partnering with Dart to have people who don't drive come to the park, and we've seen a big increase in attendance in the last couple of years, and we're going to continue to do that.
Right, that's good.
And you've been at the events when they've been very full, and you've been there on a, you know, night when it's been.
Less full.
Less full, and it's, and it's hot.
That's a positive way, less full.
So, I think, you know, we're doing everything to encourage people, and announcements at your meeting, I mean, throughout the summer and fall, Barbara will, in spring, Barbara will start to announce.
Yep.
These will be on the agenda, and they will be announced, and people can see us on DTV.
This is one of the most popular programs in, well, it is the most popular program in Central Bucks, and in the region, because of its sustainability. It pays for itself, whether you, you know, you'll get proof of that, but there's something for everyone. So, you'll see little kids' shows, and you'll see.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that, yeah, okay.
For, you know, us older folks. But the other thing that happens, if, when you get quality performers, they bring their own people. They have a following, they have a, you know, they have their own, you know, what do they call those?
Groupies.
Groupies.
I've heard, I don't.
When you have the grease band, you have grease band junkies coming, you know, so, so having the quality performers also brings out more people, so.
Yeah.
And since we have approved a track worker of a successful show, we have a wonderful band, bandstand or whatever, you know, whatever you call it, amphitheater. The program has just gotten larger and larger. Every year, it gets bigger.
I've said my comments.
All right, anything else?
No.
Is, there's a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the motion for the Performing Arts Series for this year. Say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? You notice how I don't usually do that? All right, under Supervisors, I guess I'll start. We had complaints about, from various residents about their trash haulers, and so we sent a general letter to the trash haulers who service Doylestown Township residents, and the general letter was, "Here are some complaints we're getting from our residents, you know, what do you say about them?" And most, if not all of them, did respond very politely and said, answered our concerns. And what I would like to do, and if you've taken the opportunity to read the responses from Republic and BFI and Waste Management, is just call down what the issues are, what the answers are, and put a little, you know, question and answer thing on our website to go with some kind of information of our trash haulers. Our trash haulers who are approved are on our website, approved trash haulers. And so, here's some things to look for. When you, when you engage a trash hauler, it's a private contract, so read the contract. You know, they're going to tell you what it costs, they're going to tell you what it costs if you cancel, and they're going to give you a special deal, here's your special deal. They're going to tell you if, they have to charge you to pick up their can because you don't want them anymore, that's all going to be in the contract. So, that's a private exchange between the resident and the trash hauler. Now, if we want to do something different, if we want to have one trash hauler, then they have to go by our rules. But for now, if you're contracting on your own, then here's what you should look for, but it's a private contract, and know what your contract says, and negotiate accordingly. Okay? So, I think that's basically what we should, is you guys okay with that approach?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, the one issue that they didn't address in any of the, of the two letters is where they're charging a different rate for the same level service on the same street.
Well, and, well, someone did address that, because they, it was a time and place type of negotiation. It might have been something that I think one hauler said, "Well, we offered an introductory service, just like any un-int introductory service with a cable station or a cable provider or whatever, you have, you have this price for six months, and then it changes." So, yes, they did address that, and it's probably what that was, and if it wasn't, then they, then it's the onus is on the property owner to.
Well, and I guess that's what I was going to.
We cannot get involved in their contract dispute.
I agree, and that's, I think maybe that's the message, that if you disagree with it, it's between the resident and the trash hauler.
And so, that's why.
And we can help it, but they got to do it.
We can't help it.
I mean, by asking questions.
And we did.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, and I think that we, also, you bear the right to go to another trash.
That's right.
And, you know, I mean, we give you free enterprise to go and talk to everyone and negotiate your own prices.
But, and, but know that if you cut contract early, and you want them to come pick up the can, which they have to do, then it's going to cost you.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so we'll, we'll take care of that. The other thing on, under Barbara Lyon's Supervisors' comments, is the school safety conversation that we started, you know, a couple of meetings ago, it's continuing. We still haven't gotten the municipal people together with the school district, but I have to say, weather has been a huge factor in organizing that. We've gotten a lot of comments and requests from residents to participate in the discussions, and I think one was quoted in today's or yesterday's paper, article about the school safety issue and what Doylestown Township has, you know, what came up out here. And so, I asked Jen, and I think Jen is willing to do this, that she coordinate and head, and whatever, liaison, organize the residential community in this discussion. So, you've got the municipal people, and you've got the chiefs of police, and then you've got the school district, and then you have residents who need, who need to have a voice as well. And so, we're not sure what format it's going to take yet, but we're going to work on it. Okay, you good?
Wonderful.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yep, sounds good.
Jen has kids in school, if this is appropriate. She's a supervisor, she knows what she's doing. That'll be great. And we'll learn together. It's good to have some, someone that the community can go to, the residents can go to.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Moms and dads and the people in the city.
So, we'll post that on the website or somewhere, so residents know who to contact?
I guess. We'll figure it out.
Don't give her, don't give her home number, though.
We'll figure it out, because we need to have some organization to it.
Yeah, no, I agree.
All right. When we get that figured out, we'll, we'll put it together. Public hearing on the.
You forgot the rest of the Supervisors.
I don't really care about them.
Oh, all right.
Just kidding, thanks for reminding me, I always forget.
Let me get my whole list now.
I do. I wanted to discuss the meeting that we had with the EAC and Parks and Rec. We had a joint meeting, and there were some, some conversation that actually worked between both of, both the Parks and Rec and EAC. And one of the topics that came up was the pond at Sowerman Park. It's been fenced off for quite some time because of contamination. It's natural bacteria that's creating a dangerous area for wildlife, for pets, for children. A little background, we got, we applied for a grant and didn't receive it for cleanup, and one of the solutions is that they are looking to let it revert back to wetlands. And so, that's an active, ongoing thing that they're working on for Sowerman Park. I also wanted to publicly thank the teachers and the staff and law enforcement for providing safety for the kids that decided that they wanted to walk out on school on March 17th. But I particularly wanted to thank and, and express my admiration for those kids that went out and did that. A lot of people think children, teenagers, are so apathetic, and regardless of where you stand on the issue, these children are not, and they're going to grow up to be wonderful adults that are going to work hard to make their communities better, so.
Thanks for, thank you. I'm sorry, I almost missed it.
My turn.
Yes, please.
Just two quick, or three quick comments. One, I had attended the Historical Society meeting they had on Saturday, in which they presented William Guile presentation. Was that Delaware Valley College on last Tuesday, right? And that was fascinating to me. And for those residents who don't know who this guy is, you really need to learn how fantastic of an explorer and of a person he was, and he grew up right here in Doylestown, and very little people knew that much about him. So, please educate yourself on who Edward Guile is.
And that video's on our DTV.
Yes.
Runs a loop, so you can see all about.
Yep, check the schedule and you'll see it there. Yeah, the video's there.
He lives right where the Roundabout, he used to live right where the Roundabout started.
Yeah. Just to bring attention to the other Supervisors, is Dave had scheduled another vendor to come in, and we met with on asset management, which was very good, so we're still moving along with that. It's not, because of the construction and stuff, we haven't focused, but we're, it's still moving, so that's going good. And my last comment was just about the workshop, the budget workshop that Barb mentioned. I would encourage, and just another, just another word of encouragement for people to attend that, that can come, because this is where you start to learn about the details of the budget and where the money is, and so, we're one of the few that do this type of exercise this early in the year to kick off this, our, next year's planning process, so it's very good. So, please come. That's it.
Just to add to Mr. Guile, he not only was raised here and grew up here, he's buried here.
Yes.
And right at Doylestown Cemetery. In fact, there's a contingent from China that comes over every year as a ceremony, so he's a really famous guy, if you hadn't heard of him before, and it's worth, very worth watching.
Yeah, the, the folks from China were here a couple of years ago, because they're doing actually a show in China on Edward Guile.
Amazing man. Amazing man.
They're very, he's extolled over there, he's like one of their honored, of all people, honored. So anyway, that's it? Ron, you got anything?
Nope.
Okay, Pension Advisory Committee ordinance.
The Board, as you know, will authorize me to modify your, the membership of your Pension Advisory Committee to reflect your preferences based on your discussions with Ways and Means Committee and the like. So I prepared the ordinance as requested. It was back and forth a couple of times, I think, before you finally settled on what you wanted to do. And duly advertised in the Intelligencer and with the Bucks County Law Library. So it's time for you to conduct a public hearing, and if appropriate, approve the ordinance to reconstitute the Pension Advisory Committee.
Okay, public hearing is open. Any comments regarding the creation of the, or reformatting of the Pension Advisory Committee? Anybody here? Did everyone have a chance to read the draft or redoing this? Has been, does it fairly and accurately articulate the decisions of the Board?
Yes, it does.
Hearing no comments from the public, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make the motion to approve the Pension Committee draft.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Coordinates is passed, thank you. Hydraulic drilling, this comes under unfinished business. You're all here last meeting when we talked about the Delaware Valley, Delaware River Basin Commission's resolution. He asked us to entertain and enter and to support. We circulated, or we circulated a redraft of what we were looking at last month, or last meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review it?
Yes.
Does anyone need any more comment or conversation about it? No? Is there a motion to approve this draft revised resolution? You will?
Second.
Now, have you seen this? And do you, want to just go say if you're in accordance with this, with your EAC group?
Five members out of seven of the EAC had a chance to review the edited draft, and we are in support of it.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
No, but I'll abstain, I think everybody knows why, so.
I'm going to abstain as well. I'm not sure why, but that's okay.
Do you want me to...
No, it's not.
You know, he doesn't think we should be involved in issues like this.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor.
All right, very good, thank you. So the resolution's passed. We're on support, I'll sign it. All right, anything else regarding that? Nothing? Request hookup to public sewers on 1636 Turk Road. Mr. Salisbury, Director of Zoning and all other things that are important, has said that we need, he need, they need to do this.
Right, this is tabled from your earlier meeting. Mr. Slitsky is here this evening. You'd requested that he attend. You also requested that the Bucks County Health Department go back out to the property, and you also requested that Mr. Salisbury, our Code Enforcement Director, go out to the property. All of those things were done, and as we indicated last time on a question from Mr. Snyder, we verified with Bucks County Water and Sew Authority, Mr. Slitsky's property is the only one that could go into what we refer to as the Warrington Line. The other people at the EDU are over on Alms House, and we identified that at your last meeting. And I won't speak for Sinclair, you have his memo as well as the one from the Health Department, but I think they're both indicating that he has sewage backing up into his home, and that is making for a not pleasant environment for him and his family to reside in. And he's asking the Township to consider allowing him to connect into that Warrington Line.
Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Slitsky. Does anybody on the Board have any comments or questions in writing this?
I have a couple questions. Where do we lie if along this process, right now we have one house that is affected to the point where it needs to be mediated right away? So that pulls him out of the sewer project. And what happens if we continue to have homes that we find in this situation? And I guess the carry-on to that is, is there something that, I don't want sewage running in your, backing up in your house, but how can we do this in a way where it is fair to the other 252 residents that are part of this sewer project? You know, where we fix this, but this household also bears some of the load for the entire project, is basically what I'm trying to figure out.
And I talked to both the Health Department and John Butler at Bucks County Water and Sew Authority. He's the only one who's on that line that has not, everyone else along there is pretty much tied into that line who can access it. Those were 30 parcels that we had, he's the 31st parcel. So he ended up in the future sewer project. So there's no one else, and there's no other lines except the people over on...
So he's the last one?
He's the last one.
There can be no others?
Anyone else who has a situation?
Can there be any others of the 252 tying into this one?
Not into this line, but there can be others tying into another line.
Got it, then we all can...
There's no other line, there's no other line except the one behind Alms House. So anyone in the, that's really in the 250, well, less than 250, but in the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge area, they would have to, because there's no access for them to go anywhere, they would end up with a holding tank, and they would, until the public sewers come. That's their, that's their only, that's everybody else. And hopefully...
So this is the last man standing?
He's the last man standing, yeah.
With a problem.
With a problem.
There are other people with problems, there are other people deeper in the neighborhood that already have holding tanks.
But I think, again, the perception of what we're doing is we're pulling a resident out of the project, which creates more financial burden on the 251 homes now. And, you know, I mean, frankly, I, I don't know, if I was a resident there, I wouldn't be happy about it.
Well, I wouldn't want to be in this gentleman's shoes either.
I wouldn't either, but...
Well, but I think that's what we're faced with. We have to make a decision about this gentleman tonight on his situation, not the other 252.
Well, but we're making a decision about the other 252.
He has no choice.
Well, there are, there's a holding tank for that resident, we could put a holding tank here, just like we could for the other residents.
I didn't know that that was really an effective...
No, that...
Solution at this point.
Well, Bucks County Health Department...
Doesn't say it's not.
No individual, according to the Health Department's letter, if I'm reading it correctly, no individual on that disposal so we can instruct it where there's a system. So I don't know if they would allow the holding tank when they know there's a system there. And they've been out to the site and have identified the backflow, you know, from the septic and drain goes into the, you know, into the house.
Guess the only other option would be is that he remains part of the 252, it's just that he gets hooked up quicker, but he stills going to pay a fair share.
Correct, that's what I was basically saying, like, fix it, fix it now, but I think he should still, the house should still remain part of the project.
Not if he's connected to another system. He has to pay to connect to the other system. Why would he be charged to have to pay for one he's not a part of?
I mean, he wouldn't do it. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but that's the only way you could satisfy your mind.
I'm sorry, but I'm not going to make this man wait for the other...
Well, I'm not saying he should wait.
Well...
I'm agreeing with that.
I'm not saying that either. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that either. I'm just saying that I, there was nothing in there that did not say that, and I brought this up the last time about the holding tank, and I said, come back and let us know if there's a holding tank. There's nothing in there that says that there cannot be a holding tank there. Nothing in the documentation that was provided to us.
I don't know, I guess if his septic tank can't handle it, I don't know what an additional holding tank will do for him.
Well, what if a house fails during the project between now and, that's not hooked up? You're saying that there would get a holding tank?
I, I just, I have to trust the people who are in the business of this kind of thing, like the Health Department, who are, who's saying that this man needs to hook up to a sewer line. And I'm, and I'm going to, I think that's what we should do. Let this man hook, let this family hook up to a sewer line, because they have an immediate problem that can't be remedied otherwise. And I'm not saying, I'm not seeing anything here that says he has the option of a holding tank, and that would be...
I asked that question at the last meeting, and if he could be hooked up to a holding tank, and it's not answered in that documentation.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments about this? Is there a motion to approve this connection for 1636 Turk Road?
I'll make a motion to approve this applicant.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And I'm satisfied with the extra work. That's all I asked for at the last meeting, was a little bit extra information, so I'm satisfied.
All right, you calling a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're good to go.
No.
You may leave, you may leave now. I, I'm, yes, I'm sorry that you had to come and do this. Good luck to you. New business, road materials bid for 2018.
You have a memo for me dated March 16, 2018, for the award recommendation of the 2018 road materials bids. On behalf of the Bucks County Consortium of Local Governments, they opened bids on February 26, 2018. Seven bids were received for road materials for estimated quantities for our 2018 projects.
Do you need to know any more?
It's my recommendation that we award bids to the following quarries. Eureka Stone Quarry Incorporated, Hanson Aggregates, BMC Incorporated, and Highway Incorporated LLC, and Plumstead Materials Division of Niceville Materials. Your memo has estimates that I obtained from Mr. Gar, Road Superintendent, for possible purchases for this year. And also the information on possible funds where those materials will be paid out of. That's my recommendation for this year.
Is there a motion to accept and approve the recommendation, accept the recommendation of Mr. Tomco and approve these award...
I'll make the motion to approve, but I have one question.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
And we're doing it all together?
Yes.
Sorry? You're all in it? Are you all, did I do the motion?
Oh, yeah.
So is there a second?
I'll second.
Jen, thank you.
My question, Dave, is are you obligated to purchase this much? Are you committing to that, or are you committing to the price?
No, with the contract, we're accepting their price. We do ask that they provide a surety for that and for product materials so that they hold that pricing.
That's fine.
So, yeah. We can actually go above our estimated amounts as well.
Or you can buy less.
Go less.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But for the same price.
Correct.
Excellent. Motion in the second, is any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
I have a memo in front of you.
And you can award the bids on signpost and materials in accordance with Mr. Tomco's memo.
Is there a motion to award the...
Well, I'd like, we have multiple contractors on, companies on this one as well, which is Shumong Supply, Guard State Highway. Mr. Gar will allow me to finish. Thanks, Guard State Highway Supply Incorporated. Same thing, these were bids opened by our Bucks County Consortium of Local Governments on our behalf, which we have participated. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the signed materials and post bid.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
You guys are a real tan and mac, by the way.
I know, right.
Thank goodness, we could hear all night. Okay. Zoning Hearing Board applications. The first one is an in-law suite. I'm ready to go to the...
Leave it to the ZHB.
Okay.
The second one, I would leave to the zoning Hearing Board as well. However, the third one, as zoning officer, I'm making recommendation that we send the solicitor in opposition.
I agree.
This is a minimum 40,000 square foot R1 district with a parcel that they want to subdivide, so there is really no hardship, and they bring down the two sizes of lots to almost a quarter acre each. They're trying to mirror it with others, but there are other properties in that neighborhood that also are an acre.
All right, so that one is going to go...
You need a motion from the Board to authorize the opposition now.
Is there a motion from the Board to oppose the application? This would be on 660...
Clayton.
233.
I said move.
Edison Furlong.
Second.
660.
That's his, that's his, where he is, but the property's 233 Edison Furlong.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve. All right, is there a second?
Jen's second.
Jen's second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You've got to go. You've got to go.
Well, I'm going, I'll go.
Okay.
I had a question about the application for this property.
Okay.
I wasn't sure about, it looked like they were dividing it into two pieces. Their total property size was 64,000 square feet.
Right.
But the two property sizes became 29, 317, and 27, 667, it seemed...
That's why I'm recommending that we oppose the application.
Plus they have to take out rights away to get to the net acreage, too.
Right, yeah. Oh, is that right? Okay, that's what I was wondering. All right, thank you.
Yep, not big enough. So that's done. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the Treasurer's report from March